Good evening and welcome to this October 28, 2024, meeting of the Sylvania Board of Education. Adam, can you call the roll?
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Conklin?
Here.
Ms. Lavalette?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment in memory of Brooks Boland, the second grader, Highland second grader, who tragically passed away on October 20th. So just a moment of silence. Thank you. Dr. Motley, with you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I will share my superintendent's report as item 2.1 of the agenda. I would like to share that last Thursday evening, I attended Southview's play called The Single Man. And I must share, it was absolutely hilarious. It was quite funny and engaging. And we had students that, if you don't know the story, it really is a parody of The Bachelor. And also quite a almost murder, not quite a murder mystery. But our students did phenomenal. They actually also produced live commercials that were serving as commercials, like you were watching a TV show in your living room. But the talent at Southview was absolutely brilliant. And the audience was giggling and I'm laughing out loud. So kudos to the Southview Theater students. I continue to visit with a variety of staffs across the district. That has been a pledge as part of our communications plan and really supporting our strategic plan in regards to communication and culture. I make it a priority to meet with each of our building staffs twice a year, as well as meeting with our principals a couple of times a year to have one-on-one conversations. And I continue to do that work. Tomorrow and Wednesday, I have an opportunity to meet with our high school groups for the Superintendent's Advisory Council with our high school students. That's always interesting. They are so brutally honest. And it could be about lunch servings, cheese, let's see, I've had ice cream. That was a major topic. The grilled cheese sandwiches, that's been an item of discussion. But even on a larger note, as we've gone through our master facilities plan process, I've asked them about their thoughts about our facilities, their high schools. Have they been interested in having one high school over two high schools? And just getting their input. Student voice is so valuable. And sometimes we forget to ask the students who are in our buildings every day from a different perspective, what do they think and feel about what we're doing? And so it's an opportunity for me to have that feedback. So that's coming up this week. I also have a superintendent's coffee. I believe that's this Friday at the Senior Center. If you're interested in learning more about what Sylvania Schools has had in a response to the dyslexia legislation, in addition to learning more about the science of reading and our response to what that legislation looks like as well, please come out and join me. That begins, I believe, at nine o'clock, 9:30. That's what I meant, 9:30 on Friday. In addition, we will continue and have continued with our MFP process. We have a large group committee meeting next week. I want our folks who are here tonight and maybe looking at this tape later, that we continue to do our due diligence in looking at the numbers that were projected versus actual numbers across our district. For example, for those of you who are here this evening and familiar with this out the southwest end of town, just a snippet of information that our committee will dive deeper into. We have River Tree, which is right down the road here, the new development that I believe had predicted to have 25 homes by this past August. There's three. So we have found that that has kind of slowed our enrollment data. So the sense of urgency is not as great, although there is still a sense of urgency. I'm going to call it patient urgency. So we will continue to work our plan and have a report out probably after the first of the year. One of the things that we've been able to do, though, is we've looked at the actual belly buttons and chairs and what we have students in classrooms. We've also been able through this due diligence is to recognize, not only do we have to keep our pulse on enrollment, but also we need a tier two of what about improvements to our classrooms that are already existing in places like Southview or at Northview where we have art rooms without lighting, natural light, or at Arbor Hills, or again even at Whiteford where we know we have some rooms that are crowded with multiple intervention specialists. So we'll have a chance to also explore not only what we're going to do in regards to capacity of our classrooms, but the process will continue to look at what we can do to bring our learning spaces into 21st century learning spaces so we can optimize our learning environments for our students. So that concludes my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you. And we have commendations this evening.
Best part of the agenda is right here. We have several accommodations, I'm sorry, commendations for this evening. It is item 3.1. Commendations are an opportunity for our board to recognize students and staff who have achieved state or national honors in academics, extracurriculars, or otherwise. And tonight, it is my pleasure to not only recognize students at Northview who achieved a 26 or higher on the ACT, but we have several golfers in our audience tonight. I'm kind of jealous because I know I've been playing golf for a long time and I'm old and they play better than I do and probably did by the time they were eight. But regardless, it's something for me to aspire to. So we have several golfers and their coaches here this evening that we would like to recognize. So kiddos, if you're here, what we are going to do is I'm going to go over to the mic with Ms. Lavalette, our board president. We are going to call you up and then we will hand you a certificate. At that point in time, you'll be able, mom, dad, uncles, family members, you'll be able to take a picture of your child. And then at the end, we will also take a group picture of the team. Okay? Got it? And then we'll come back and vote on the commendations. So Ms. Lavalette, if you would join me. So we are going to begin, can you hear me? This is close enough? Do I need to get a little closer? Yikes. Okay, great. Tonight, we begin with recognizing Sidney Sutton. Sidney, come on up. Sidney is here by name. As the girls' golf 2024 NLL Cardinal Division Player of the Year. Congratulations. Congratulations. Parents and students, audience members, I want you to know this is our first time at Central Trail for a board meeting. So we're trying to just figure it out. But we are vibing the intimacy. We kind of like it, but we have some quirks to work out. So just be patient with us. As we move on, we are going to recognize the Southview Girls Golf Team as they are being recognized and commended by the Sylvania Board of Education for achieving the status of the 2024 NLL Champions Cardinal Division. So. I call you up, will you please join us up front? We have Emma Currie. We also have Emma Irons? Irons? Boy, that's a girl who has a name for a golfer, Irons, seriously? Oh, my goodness, congratulations. That's fantastic. That's perfect. Evelyn Jackson? Taylor Kryotowski? Taylor, tell me your last name one more time.
Kryotowski.
Kryotowski, all right, Taylor, congratulations. And then we also have Sidney Sutton again, because she's hard to find. We also have Tavion Walton? Tavion? All right, that's okay. And then we have Coach Matt Voitak. Matt, he's listening, will he make it either? All right, well, we will hold on to those two. Congratulations, can we have one more round of applause? Congratulations. Anybody, if any of you want to help me with the backswing, that would be great. My short gait really is where I need the most help, though, just for the record. All righty, next, without further ado, we have the Southview Boys Golf Team here tonight. We, as a board of education, commendate the Boys Cougars Golf Team as the 2024 NLL Champions Cardinal Division. First, we have Camden Boganski. Camden couldn't make it, all righty. Benjamin Hood, come on up there. We also have Kyle Freels. We have Ben Kotnick. Wyatt Tushman, not here, and Isaac Benz, of course. And we have Coach Casey Noonam. Casey, come on up. Cultivating that talent. And for the record, I also would like to recognize that we are recognizing Coach Noonam because he was Coach of the Year as well. Time for a photo op. We'll scoot back, boys. Thank you, congratulations. To the Board of Education, I recommend approval of item 3.1, recognition of achievement of our several athletes here from Southview in regards to the girls' and boys' golf team and their coaches, as noted and recognized this evening. And our ACT score. Oh, and our ACT score, we can't forget about Logan.
I think Greg moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
I did chip one in once, I really did. Chipped one in once. Hasn't happened again, it was five years ago, still proud.
I didn't. Congratulations again to all of you. Please call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Congratulations again.
So you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to. So if you'd like to go. Okay, so we are now at the portion of our agenda for items, public participation for items which are on the agenda.
We don't have anyone sign up. Did anyone need to sign up?
Okay. Then we are with you, Mr. Coke.
All right, just a few items this month. I did want to put on your desk, I copied this, but I also sent a link for a popular annual financial report. We get audited every year, but it's on a accrual basis, GAAP accounting. This is a cash basis report, just to see how we've done in the past several years. And then it gives the latest fiscal year end. So I wanted to just give you guys a copy of that. We're going to put it on our website as well, just to highlight how we've been doing, comparing us to other districts a little bit on a property tax basis and things like that. So take a look at that, let me know if you have any questions, and I'll put that on the website. So 5.1, we'll do a standalone item here for minutes from October 7. Greg was not in attendance. And then we'll do 5.2 to 5.6 on a consent agenda.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
So 5.2, minutes from the 23rd. 5.3, treasurer's report for month ending September 30. Next month, I'll do a forecast presentation. Again, I'll highlight last fiscal year and then we'll talk about this fiscal year and then the next four years after that. So I'll do a presentation there. 5.4, availability of funds. We did have a few purchase orders that we need, or purchases we need to accept there. We have one new assistant transportation director for 5.5, cellphone payment. 5.6 is just a request for advance from Lucas County. That's an annual approval. And it just allows us to get some of our tax money advanced before the final settlement. So it allows us to collect that money ahead of time. So we need to submit that to the county before year end. Transfers, another annual approval. We transfer money to our severance fund every year in Fund 35.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 5.2 through 5.7.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
I really like this a lot. I just thought it was great and I just wanted to publicly say that, that I think it's very useful for the non-accounting mind, the non-financial mind.
You mean like us?
Like us. To really kind of look at the numbers. And when it says shown in the thousands, does that mean that that's fiscal year '24 here?
It's like 102 million.
Okay, right, okay.
Or 69 million.
69 million, not, okay. So I was like, what?
Yeah, it's just when you have that many digits.
I get it, yeah. No, I really, and I like the graphics because I think it's very informative and the public will be able to follow this. I especially like the tax comparisons because I'm always hearing how we're the highest and I always say, I don't think we are. So I like this and so thank you. And this will be on our website.
Yep, I'll put it on our website. And I'll use it to maybe send out to key communicators. We have a distribution list, those types of things. It just gives us some talking points.
Yeah, I like it.
Thank you.
Adam, does the tax information on page seven, does that include income taxes where they're applicable?
It does not, it does not.
Wow, so Perrisburg is even higher, then?
Yeah. Yeah, Perrisburg in the income tax, I think Evergreen does. That's probably it. I don't, actually, I don't know if Evergreen does.
Thank you. Call the roll, I think.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Dr. Motley?
Yes, I move for recommendation for approval, item 6.1, which is the acceptance of gifts. This is a donation of medical supplies from the Northwest Ohio Regional Emergency Planning Coalition, valued at $15,000.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
There is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very generous, very generous.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend approval for item 6.2, which is an overnight field trip for the Northview baseball team to take 20 team members to Cocoa Beach, Florida for spring training. This would be March 22 through the 29.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Do they need a board member?
I'll check on that for you.
I think I might actually be with the band at Disney that week, though, so kind of things.
Could be.
There's no beach.
Like with the band or?
Yeah.
Are you chaperoning?
Oh, no, I'll be following them behind.
That's what I did, trailed the band, yeah. It was a groupie.
I was like, I'll see you there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Adam, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you, I recommend item 6.3, a policy for a second read, policy 5200 with, in regards to religious expression.
I'll move for approval. I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you, I recommend item 6.4 for the SAW handbook revision. We recommend approval for the revision of the SAW handbook per the exhibit.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you, I recommend item 6.5, the approval of the Sylvania Exempt Employee Handbook Revision, again, as noted per the exhibit.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you, I recommend item 6.6, a memorandum of understanding with our Sylvania Education Association for stipends to be paid via the ESC, the Educational Service Center.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you, I recommend item 6.7, which is an MOU between the Board of Education and the Sylvania Education Association for an educator to earn 7.6 pay to cover an AP course for a temporary moment of time. And that MOU is attached.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Comments or questions? Thank you for working through this situation, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you, we wanted to make sure students have the best opportunity to be successful. So we work together to make that happen. I would like to recommend item 6.8, a memorandum of understanding with the Sylvania Education Association for an insurance waiver.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you, my last item for this evening is item 6.9, which is a memorandum of understanding with OPSI, again regarding our insurance waiver.
I'll move for approval. I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you.
The background noises. Mr. Tiversky?
Thank you, I am asking approval for items 7.1 and 7.2 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1 are licensed substitutes and 7.2 is licensed after duty.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 7.1 and 7.2.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you, I am asking approval for items 8.1 through 8.4 on a consent agenda basis. 8.1 are classified new hires. 8.2 are two classified retirements. I want to publicly thank Pat Antonelli and Melanie Myris. They'll be around for a little while, they're going to be here until the end of the calendar year. But congratulations to those two. 8.3, classified disability retirements. And 8.4 are classified personnel changes.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 8.1 through 8.4.
Second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you, I will ask for approval for items 9.1 through 9.4 on a consent agenda basis. 9.1, our licensed supplemental positions for this 24-25 school year. 9.2 are for non-teaching pupil activity contracts for the 24-25 school year. 93 are athletic volunteers. And 9.4 are resignations and changes and corrections to the supplementals for this school year.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 9.1 through 9.4.
Second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are on board reports. Greg, do you have anything to report?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things. So I had a master facilities plan meeting back in September with Dan, so that was good. We both got an update on where everything stands, talked about the current enrollment numbers, so that was good. Had a CIC meeting early October, there's going to be some downtown construction happening. So they kind of talked a lot about the communication plan and working with the local businesses there. And then I had Sylvania Rec meeting and a SAG-AR meeting. And really, the biggest thing there is issue 20, that's going to be on the ballot here in November. It's not a new tax, but it's to support the Sylvania Rec and the program. So just encourage everyone to vote yes for that. And if anybody wants signs, we can get you some signs.
And an example of that is happening right behind us.
Right behind us, exactly.
For recording purposes, it's authentic.
Julie?
Um, yeah, I actually forgot my notes. But we did have a Sylvania Prevention Alliance meeting and I can't, I don't think there's anything to report from that. I also did go to the Southview Show on Saturday night. Mr. Benz was right behind me and it was, it was a little very entertaining.
So funny.
And Bella Marcie tomorrow?
Yes.
I think that's it.
Kim?
I have nothing, we did not have an SSPO meeting, we're doing a quarterly now. My first SES meeting is this month and our communications meeting got canceled. So I've got nothing for you.
Dan?
No, thank you.
The only thing I would add to the Sylvania Prevention Alliance is that the Hot Cocoa Race is February 22nd this year and registration is underway.
Okay, so we are now at the portion of our agenda for public participation for items which are not on the agenda. And we welcome public comment. When you come up, please state your name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes, so I'll raise my hand when you're approaching. Public comment is limited to three minutes, so I'll raise my hand when you're approaching your three minutes. Also, we do not generally respond to public comment. Depending on the situation, we may reach out to you individually or direct the superintendent to follow up. Melissa Wise?
If you could put the mic more that way?
It's going to be hard to hear.
Yeah, probably. She could just stand there and yell. Project, right? You want me over there?
Yes, if you could, please.
It's just difficult to hear with the gymnasium noises.
Absolutely. So I just wanted to come, address the board, just to advocate for the Southview Music Program. I am a very proud Southview parent. I love Southview. It's an amazing school. I have a junior that's in sports, but then I have a freshman that is in orchestra, and so I'm just starting to learn a little bit more about the orchestra program. My first time in the orchestra room was open house, and I just remember thinking, gosh, it looks a little old in here. It kind of is a little outdated. It reminded me of my high school, which, that's been quite a few years ago, so it needs some improvements. It needs updated. And I've heard things from my daughter about how crowded it can be, especially in that hallway by the orchestra and band room. Very, very crowded in there. I've also heard things about the instruments. There's not enough room for the instruments. They are storing them on baker's racks, because they don't have instrument storage, so they're making the most of it, but I feel like maybe there's some room for improvement with that part of it. But there's not exactly room for the instrument storage. So I just feel very strongly that it would be something to look at for the future. I know there's not unlimited money. We don't have money trees, but definitely, like, that space has become very crowded. The program, my research showed that the program is growing. It's continuing to grow. They're projecting, even with the seniors that are graduating, another 50 kids from the junior highs that will be joining the choir, orchestra, and band. So they're already busting, and they're going to get even bigger next year. So I would just like to advocate for them, that they are an area that definitely could use some improvements, some expansion. I know, I talked to people within the band, and they are only able to rehearse outside because of the largeness of the band, so when there's bad weather, they have to kind of displace the gym students or the theater students in order to be able to rehearse, or they just don't get to rehearse. So the same thing is going on with the band that is going on with the orchestra. And the storage, or the rehearsal rooms is being used for storage, so they don't have their little rehearsal practice rooms available, so they're growing, they're getting a lot bigger, and they definitely need to have more space. So I just wanted to come in and bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lavalet, may I make, I know traditionally we don't respond, but may I make one brief comment?
I was going to ask you and Dr. Benz to talk and get back with.
Thank you for coming and sharing your concerns, and I think your feedback is timely as we are going through the master facilities plan. I know that Dr. Benz is well aware of the tight space that's down there. Quite frankly, I don't think it's been addressed since the construction of Southview. It is its original state, and that's one of the things that we do and have discussed when we're talking about improving 21st century learning environments. How do we accommodate not only numbers, but making sure that it's optimal for our students at the same time? So we will definitely fold this into our conversation. It was already out there on the peripheral. We have some other focus points that, where we are also bursting at the scene, so we'll just slide this into the queue as well as an area of focus. So thank you, Dr. Benz.
I think everything that was stated is accurate. I don't know those numbers exactly, so I want to be careful on the record, but in, I'd say in eight years, we'd probably at least double, maybe close to triple, the number of students that are down there. So just in the past eight years, it's really down the same.
It's a good problem to have, though. I'm glad to hear that so many kids are interested in the performing arts.
We sure did.
I have a question, though. So the practice rooms, is there any place else to store whatever's being stored in there? Is there just like, I mean, do we need to like put them in Adam's office or something, some stuff?
We have to move stuff around. There's no safe way to do it completely by fire code, and what happened is the play was this week. So some stuff just couldn't go. Like sometimes the pit in the theater is used, which is mainly out of the way, but that couldn't be used. So this week was a little different than others, but there is no week that everyone's[1719.82]